I'd like to call this meeting to order if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, Council members Gearbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett is here, Police Chief Rennick is also here, as well as DPW Director Fordice and City Superintendent Engineer Rubel. For the rest of you who are present this evening, we appreciate you being here, and we would encourage you to sign up in the back to my left. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that item, and so we'll proceed with presentations. We have two this evening. The first is the Celine Main Street Quarterly Update, and I believe that's going to be done by our Main Street Manager. Riley, the floor is yours.
Hello. First, I just want to thank City Council for all the great hospitality for this first quarter I've been here, and I personally like to thank Mr. Rhodes for helping me out with getting housing, one of the transition to move into this position. First off, we'll start with the organization. Volunteer hours in our first three quarter, we reported eighteen hundred and twenty-four hours, which add a value of $22 per hour equals over $40,000 in labor. Our team privately raised over $18,000 through primarily our corporate sponsorship program, which continues to grow. Four volunteers and myself attended the National Main Street Conference in March in Atlanta. Continued education is a requirement of our Michigan Main Street contract. The organization team applied and was awarded the Communications Plan Technical Service by Michigan Main Street, which is valued at $8,000. Our annual celebration was held in March and had a great turnout. We celebrated all of those who caved to the organization through volunteering or a financial commitment. Design, the Student Banner Art Project, the design team was busy managing this year's Student Banner Art Project. It was great to partner with the Celine Area Schools and the Arts and Culture Committee, who both contributed financially to the project. We received 225 banners, and a team of judges narrowed it down to eighty to be printed for the street polls, which are now hanging up thanks to DPW. The Bee Blooming Campaign is underway, and the baskets are hanging. There are still a few left sponsorships. If you would like to sponsor a planner or a basket, you can contact me at director@celine mainstreet.org or go to our website. Leather Bucket Alley, I've been working with Mike Capelli on getting different bids, but soon there will be patio lights with zigzagging across the alley, thanks to permission by the adjacent property owners, and hopefully this project should be completed soon. Streetscape and Merchant Parks, members of our design team have been working with the city on both the Streetscape design and Merchant Park designs. Promotion, Winter Fest was actually a project before I actually took this position, but at this year's Winter Fest, it was chaired by Dave Eberlein, and was a great success. Activities were held in and out of business and brought hundreds of adults and children down for some wintertime fun. We've had a great review by participants and our business owners, and we hope to continue on that success for next year. Ladies Night Out was one of my first events that I was helped with in my new position, and it was a chocolate affair was the theme, and it turns out chocolate is a pretty popular attraction, and we had one of the biggest turnouts for this event during that. Taste of Celine was another successful event, and it's a fairly new event for Celine Main Street, and we sold over 230 tickets, and these participants enjoyed music, food, art, and throughout all downtown Celine. Marketing and Public Relations Group is a new group with Celine Main Street, and they're a group of volunteers working together to plan, market, and promotions of the district as a whole. The first project they accomplished was an event handbook, so that event chairs develop timelines for promoting the events in the most comprehensive manner. The group will be focusing on an overall marketing promotions plan for the entire year, including targeted times throughout the year when events are not happening. Business and Development Team, we actually had our Surviving Construction Guide. Business retention is the overall goal for 2015, and in order to meet that goal, the Business Development Team hired downtown professionals to assist in preparing a Surviving Construction Guide. This guide will help prepare our businesses and residents for upcoming construction projects. Our goal is for the businesses to not only survive, but also to thrive during this time. Currently, I am working with Wally McNeil with Max on a downtown parking plan. Hopefully, we will have a work plan together. We're going to be attending the MDA Conference next week, and we hope to get some suggestions and hopefully work together with City Council on maybe a downtown parking management plan is our goal. Task Force Development, the Business Development Team worked with the city staff to develop a team of volunteers that are to focus on preparing for the upcoming construction. The task force has been meeting through the first quarter, is now working on an implementation plan using the Surviving Construction Guide report. That's mainly been our first quarter since I've been here, and I appreciate everything, and we hopefully will continue to work harder for you.
Very good, we appreciate that. Are there any questions for our Main Street Director?
Oh, yeah.
No, very good, we appreciate your leadership. Again, welcome to Celine, we're glad to have you on board. Okay, next up is Crossing Guard Presentations, Chief Rennick, do you and Officer Ringe want to take the lead on this?
Yes, thank you. We have a very dedicated cadre of crossing guards, and Dave Ringe has been in charge of this program, and Mayor, if you'd like to step down as well, that would be great. Dave has some awards to give them for their years of service, so Officer Ringe?
Well, I want to thank everybody, especially many years of supervising the crossing guards, and it's amazing the job that they do, well, in fact, when we're out there on the street, any rain, sleet, or snow, so are the crossing guards, because they're like the front lines. They're the first face that the kids see when they go to, well, the Pleasant Ridge School, you've got Heritage and Woodland Meadows School, and it's amazing, you know, they're like the role models for these kids, and also the eyes and ears for us for the police, too. Amazing what they spot out there. So again, this is just a small token, having this award ceremony tonight. Just to kind of go over the list here, we have at least eight who have one to four years of service, we've got two with a five-year service, four with ten years or more service, and then a 24-year, which is twenty years of service, and a 25-year service. So there's a lot of dedication here to our kids, so I just want to, you draw the applause for these crossing guards. What I would like to do, if you want to have the crossing guards come up here, if I could have Teresa Smith. And Teresa Smith, she started back in 2004, so she is beginning the one-year service award, there you go, and there's a little bell pin, you can wear it if you're crossing her. Thank you. Next is Nikki Eberlein, and she started back in 2008, so she actually has six years of service, so thank you very much. And then Sandy Orsery, she has four years, if you want to stick on Sandy. She actually started back when I started supervising the crossing guards, back in 96, and then she had to leave back in 2008, but then she recently came back in 2014, so accumulation, she has twelve years of service. So you started back in your fifth grade, when we were seeing control, back then, we just started right in the crossing yards, so thank you very much. Okay.
Who's the card that's the most?
The card that's the most is Lydia Dolce, she has 25 years of service, she started back in 1990, and right close to her was the lady who ran Gaines College, she started back in 1990. Those two actually were here before me, so, there you go.
Officer Ringe, thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to be here, man, we really appreciate it. Appreciate your work with the crossing guards, and thank you to the three ladies who were able to attend tonight and all of our crossing guards, we greatly appreciate your service. We'll move on to the portion of the agenda where we entertain citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Hess, on May 18th, I had submitted a letter and asked the council to receive it. The letter was October 1st, 2012, regarding concerns, and then the information has since been distributed to the council, I understand, and I am requesting that the letter that I wrote be received on the consent agenda, and if not, how I would go about having it received publicly by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there other public comments?
Good evening, my name's Paul Borger, I'm at 573 Castleberry Drive, and I'm here tonight to petition City Council to waive the late duty fees on the water sewer bill that was due May 1st, which I hope you're all in possession of my letter. You all seen it, I hope?
Yeah.
All right, there is an investigation underway by the Postal Service as well to determine if they are at fault, but in any case, I look at this as, my wife and I paid the bill actually early, it's dated the 19th, postmarked the 21st, the Postal Service said that it should take three to five days to arrive here, it took over 20, so that's four cycles, but we actually mailed it within two mailing cycles in advance of the due date, in good faith, using the envelope that's provided by the city with postage and a return address. So we just don't feel that it's, we should be paying the penalty for someone else's failure. We did everything right, we did everything by the book, it's not the principle, they're not, that it's $15, that's only a day and a half's worth of lunch allowance, but it's the principle of the policy and the procedure. Now, I understand there is the one-time waiver that I can use to my advantage, but when in fact, I've never been late for a bill to the city, and this one was actually early, I just would like to ask council to waive that penalty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borger. Additional citizen comments? No, then we'll proceed with the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig to approve as submitted. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing, this is business item 15-102, this is General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2016. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 22nd, 2015 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough regarding the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2016, excuse me.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. I know that our deputy treasurer is not here, but our city treasurer is here. Ms. Bennett, the memorandum pretty much speaks for itself, do you care to make any additional comment? No, thank you, ma'am. Any subsequent discussion on this item? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, the chair would seek the motion to open the public hearing, affording anyone in the public an opportunity to speak on this issue.
So moved?
Moved by Councilmember Roth, was that a second?
Seconded by Mr. Roth.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is now open at, let's say, 7:44 PM. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved by Gearbaugh to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. I'll get you on the next one, Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is now closed at 7:45. The final motion will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, adopting the General Appropriations Act budget for fiscal year 2015-2016, providing for a general operating millage of 14.1564 mils, including funding required for fire protection, the 2001 street debt millage in the amount of 0.1202 mils, the 2004 street debt millage of 0.4004 mils, and the refuge millage of 1.6030 mils, for a total millage levy of 16.8 mils, which is unchanged from fiscal year 2014-2015.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Dillon. Discussion. Mr. Gearbaugh?
I'm just glad that we're able to maintain, of course, our millage at the same level as we had last year. I know people are concerned that we should look at always trying to address and maybe reducing our expenses and reducing taxes, but we all know that if we want to get our roads fixed, if we want to do repairs in the city, we have to have revenue to do it, and I think this is a good budget that we've moved forward ahead, and I think we've done some great projects. We've got things in the plan for this year that I believe will help address some of our roads and repair some of them within the city, and I'm glad that we're able to do this again this year.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Mayor Protim Rhodes?
I wanted to say that there was a lot of effort and time that went into the preparation of the draft budgets and the various iterations thereof, the fine tuning of them to arrive at this final document, and I'd like to thank all those who participated.
Additional comments?
Well, I too would like to thank and acknowledge staff's contribution, which was tremendous. This is probably one of the best budget cycles that I've gone through, not only because our financial situation has improved fundamentally, but also because of the amount of time and attention that staff invested in this really important endeavor, probably one of our most crucial profound responsibilities. And I would encourage everyone to take a look at this budget, there'll be a hard copy available up front in the lobby, excuse me, and eventually, I also believe there'll be a document online, but this budget is really a reflection of our values and invests in the types of critical areas that have a real impact on our citizens' quality of life. So, you know, this is a living, breathing document, it's important, I would encourage you to take a look at it. I'm very pleased, I enthusiastically support this motion and the adoption of this budget, and again, I would like to thank staff for all their time and all the energy that they invested to bring this to fruition, so thank you.
Is there anything further? No, that's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-103, this is Carrigan Cafe Outdoor Table Request. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 27th, 2015 memo from Building Inspector Taylor, and to approve or not to approve the request from Carrigan's Cafe to place outdoor tables on the city sidewalk.
Move to approve, acknowledge and approve.
Very good, thank you, Councilwoman Cybo Koenig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Is there anyone from staff who would care to comment on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is similar to the former business there, and Karen is here from Carrigan's, one of the owners, if anybody had any questions, but it's similar to the outdoor seating in previous years, and so staff has reviewed it and recommends it be approved.
We do have the applicant here, as the city manager noted, do you care to make any comment at all?
Thank you. Good to see everybody.
I think that will be sufficient. Are there any questions for staff or our applicant? Mr. Rhodes?
Not a question but a comment, I've stopped by Carrigan's Cafe frequently for coffee, and it's excellent, a bit better than what we get served here at city council meetings, I'm sorry to say, but I'm glad to have Carrigan's Cafe and Karen in town.
Absolutely, thank you. Any additional comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote, it's been properly moved by Cybo Koenig, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, appreciate you being here. We move on to new business item 15-104, this is request for waiving of late penalty charges at 573 Castleberry Drive. The motion that's before us is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 21st, 2015 memo from City Treasurer Bennett, and the May 13th, 2015 letter from Paul and Linda Borger requesting waiver of late penalty charges on their utility bill at 573 Castleberry Drive. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cybo Koenig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Treasurer Bennett, do you care to comment at all on your memo dated May 21st?
Yeah, just wanted to advise the council that we, the city staff was, you know, brought, this was brought to our attention when Mrs. Borger came into City Hall, and we were, you know, looking through it. We are the first ones to admit that we will make mistakes, so we had went through our daily works for the time around that timeframe to look for a possible mispayment or something like that, and it was, I was at the front counter of the day when we took the mail, we get our mail delivered in a bin, and after due dates, we're pretty conscientious about looking for those past dues, and as soon as it came in, Mary held it up and goes, here's that payment that we've been looking for. So it's unfortunate, and, you know, we do have a very long, good standing track record with residents at this address, they never have had a penalty or a late fee on either their taxes or the utility billing, and we did express to them that there is the one-time waiver that the council enacted, and at this point, I think you heard his comments earlier, and if there's any questions, but that's...
Any questions for Treasurer Bennett?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, does it require a council to approve it? I thought we gave that authority for a one-time...
We can do the one-time waiver, but Mr. Borger is requesting us to waive it and not use his one-time waiver. That's why we're here. We can do that if he was to address the letter to me saying use my one-time waiver, but he is requesting that the city council waive it because it was not his error that caused the lateness. I mean, he had, you know, we have attached with the letter, there's a copy of the envelope postmarked in that, so he's requesting that the city council take a different action than the policy.
Anything further, Mr. Gearbaugh? Anything, any additional comments or questions for Ms. Bennett? No, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you kindly. Any subsequent discussion on this motion? Mr. Rhodes?
Paul's not going to like this, but I think he's coming to the wrong group to redress for the $15 and whatever it was late fee. I think that belongs to the post office, not to the city. However, we do have the waiver, the one-time waiver, and that's what I thought he was asking for to begin with, but now it sounds like he's not, he just wants to have it waived, and, you know, the principle is, it's not the city's fault either, if there's any fault that lies, and I know it's not Paul's fault, because I know how particular he is about getting things done, so if there's any fault anywhere, it lies within the postal system somewhere, so I don't know why it is that the city should bear the burden of redressing the postal system's error.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Rhodes, are there any subsequent thoughts? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I agree, I think that's the reason why we set up this one-time waiver, was to account for these type of things, that it's never necessarily the owner's problem, but it may be the post office did something or something else, so I think this is appropriate use for this, and that's the reason why we put it in place, so...
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Anything further? And again, I would note that the motion in front of us, which was properly moved by Cybo Koenig, seconded by Dillon, is simply to acknowledge receipt, so if there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. If there's nothing further on that, we'll move on to new business item 15-105, this is People's Express Contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 27th, 2015 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the one-year contract as presented with People's Express in an amount not to exceed $45,423, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to sign upon review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to acknowledge receipt, to approve and authorize.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Mr. Fordice, or DPW Director Fordice, rather, would you care to make any comment this evening?
Thank you, just quickly summarize the memo, as you all know, we've, the council and staff have been meeting with the ride, trying to find some alternative and improved public transit options. The ride is not currently ready to offer us something that will work for us, so recommending another one-year extension of our contract with People's Express, the contract here is for the same price as last year, same terms, and also continues to include the second bus, which is funded by a federal grant, no cost to the city, to provide out-of-town transit.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Are there any questions for our DPW Director? Ms. Tahar?
I'm hoping, I guess it's a comment more than a question.
Please.
Implied question perhaps, I'm hoping that People's Express will continue to work with you to provide data about rides used and destinations and that, and the sort of thing that we saw earlier.
Right, yeah, we actually, we get a monthly report from them, and those numbers, their monthly report cycle doesn't jive really well with my monthly report cycle, so most of my monthly reports will have those numbers in there occasionally, or off-cycle a little bit, so you can see those each month in my report.
Okay, yes, and I'm glad to hear we'll continue to see them, thank you.
Definitely.
Any additional questions for Mr. Fordice? Jeff, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
Well, let me just say that I will be supporting this motion, and I want to preface by saying that the employees and the volunteers with People's Express do an outstanding job, and I'm very pleased that we have a second van online now, which allows one bus to remain in the city during our hours of operation, while allowing the second to make important trips to St. Joe, to U of M, to other key locations in the greater Wasnaught area. But as I've stated pretty emphatically in the past, I'm a big believer in public transit, I'm a firm believer that as this community continues to grow, we're going to need new and expanded public transit options. So I want to assure my colleagues and the audience this evening that staff and I will continue to engage with AAATAs, and I'm hopeful that in a year's time, we'll be able to present a purchase of a service agreement for, at a minimum, the Dial-A-Ride service, which we currently offer our citizens through People's Express. I've said before, the future is with the ride, and, you know, it's already doing great things in the Ypsilanti Township, Ypsilanti City, Ann Arbor area, and I think that that program, that service would ultimately greatly benefit our residents, so I would encourage my colleagues to keep an open mind and to work with me to make that happen in the not-too-distant future.
Any additional comments? No, that's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Roth, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. I shouldn't have let you off the hook so early, Mr. Fordice. You're up again with new business item 15-106, this is the purchase of a street sweeper. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 27th memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of an Eggen Pelican Waterless Street Sweeper, I hope I got that right, for the not-to-exceed amount of $230,238.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mr. Roth, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours, we've talked about this issue on a number of occasions during the past few years, but we welcome any comments you have this evening.
The proposed purchase is to replace our 1996 Elgin Pelican with a new Elgin Pelican, but with a different filtration system. Our existing one has a water-based dust control system that is a little bit labor-intensive, it's limited in its effectiveness by how much water you have onboard, and if you overapply the water, you get what we call a snail trail, kind of a smear of mud... you get what we call a snail trail, kind of a smear of mud behind the device. If you air on the low side, you get dust billowing about. The new one is, is waterless, which in addition to being easier to implement, also increases the effectiveness of the machine in its ability to pick up fine particulates, which is becoming an area of focus in stormwater quality programs. And indeed, street sweeping is one of our commitments under our, our current stormwater management program. We did make three attempts over the past three years to qualify for partial grant funding of a, of a purchase through the congestion mitigation and air quality grant program. That program has performed equipment replacements based on improved emissions from diesel engines in the past. But the, the seven, the SEMCOG group, which manages that grant program in this area, is, is really moving towards projects of greater regional impact. So they have not done a, an equipment replacement in four or five years. So after three attempts and, and reviewing with the SEMCOG folks, we do have one attempt left, but decided that our chances were very, very slim. And our current machine is worn out at...
The ninety-six?
The ninety-six. And this is obviously a very dirty job that it does. And it is, it is time to replace it.
Any questions for DPW Director Fordice? Mayor Protam Rhodes?
Just wondering what the proposed disposition is of the old sweeper?
Well, under the, if we had gotten the grant, we would have been required to disable the, the existing sweeper. So since we're not in the grant program, we can do whatever we'd like with it. Most likely, it will be scrapped because of its, its condition. We, I think, we will look into reselling it. It might have more value as a very, very used machine than, than a scrap, but we'll, we'll evaluate those two options and do whichever is most advantageous.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Just one real quick. As they would say down south, though, we were in high cotton with the, the ninety-six machine. We got a lot of life out of it. We certainly got our money's worth. Any idea the, the longevity of, of this, this new street sweeper?
I would expect a solid fifteen years out of it.
Very good. Anything else for Mr. Fordice? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Roth, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item fifteen dash one oh seven. This is North Harris Street Water Main and Street Project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen memo from Superintendent Engineer Ruble and to approve or not to approve the awarding of the twenty-fifteen North Harris Street Water Main and Street Project to D. N. Higgins, Inc. of Ann Arbor in the amount of one million, one-hundred-and-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
You want to acknowledge receipt first, Mr. Rhodes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Acknowledge receipt and approve.
Very good. It's been moved by Mayor Protam Rhodes to acknowledge receipt and to approve. Was it seconded by Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ruble, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We received five bids. The low bid was D. N. Higgins. As you can see, they were lower than the second bid by eighty thousand dollars. Mr. Doug Higgins, the owner, owner of the company, is here. He is very familiar with Celine, has done many projects here in the past, including the two I mentioned in my memo, the cemetery. They're willing to take on lots of difficult projects and, you know, for instance, deep repairs for our DPW. They're good on emergency calls and have performed very well on, on past water main and street projects. So we're very happy with the results of the low bid. As you can tell by the report here on the budgetary section, that we did have to increase the water main portion of the contribution to the project without jeopardizing the street fund. So the street fund did have adequate budget, budget, budgeting despite the increase in the bid amount. Bids, usually we actually come in below bid, but for the reasons stated here on page two, there were several reasons why we figured the bids came in higher than normal, most being, the two highest considerations are being this is post-recession and that steel prices and some material prices escalated over the past year. I did check and Mr. Higgins provided the last two bids in the city of Ann Arbor recently, and they both suffered similar situations where bids came in up to twenty-three percent higher, especially in the water main category, where it went from eighty-five dollars a foot up to one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars a foot. Our estimate actually was a little bit on the low side, so, so part of it is, is we were being very conservative on the estimate, trying to stay within the budgetary constraints. But as you can see on page two, on the budget line items, we, the major street fund, Tifa local street budgets will stay the same. And the water main fund would be increased hundred, from one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand to four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, reason being that that's the largest component that contributed to the increase, because basically the price of the water main, the water main parts. The other contributing factor with the water component of the bid is that the water main was added later. And through the design process, it wasn't known how the water main installation would affect the other street bid items. For instance, it caused more carbon and removal and more base removal than we would have done with the street project because it's doing the deep trench and taking, we had to take and replace the limestone base. So there were other items that came into play during the design process. And so that does represent an adequate association between the water main costs and the street costs, so they are in their appropriate funds. So overall, we're satisfied with the, the low bidder. We recognize the fact that bids are higher. They have the same experience in Ann Arbor now in their last two projects. And so we recommended the award to D. N. Higgins for that amount of one million, one-hundred-and-three-thousand, six-twenty-nine-seventy-five.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ruble. Are there questions for our city engineer superintendent? Mr. Gearbock?
I see in the bid, there's metro funds being used for the sidewalks. What sidewalks are being replaced?
Well, there, we found out when we did the final layout on the sidewalks, just, just about the time we were doing the final bid estimate and getting those figures in, that there was more sidewalks damaged by tree roots and due to ramp replacement than what we normally ran into on street projects. So the intent of the use of the metro funds is to replace bad sidewalks on local streets, you know. And so here, we're taking advantage of the unit prices here in this project, and we, we want to get that, those bad sidewalks taken care of now rather than wait two or three years and put them under a program of, you know, doing something beyond the current effort, which is the small stuff where they do the leveling, the grinding.
These are, but these are city responsibility, not homeowner. So we may have to put them back. I just want to make sure we're not covering any homeowner replacement as part of this.
Now, there's a, if you walk down Harris Street, you'll see a large number of trees and even there's one fellow's driveway's been heaved up, the driveway approach, heaved up by, by tree roots.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbock. Mayor Protam Rhodes?
One question and one comment. Question has to do with the alternate paving mix that is mentioned in here.
Correct.
That states that it should be stronger and longer lasting. Just any idea of how much longer lasting it should be?
Well, talking to the engineers, they figure somewhere between five and ten years. And it's also a stronger pavement to hold up against heavier traffic, too.
So we can get five to ten years more out of that road for only forty-six hundred dollars?
Correct.
That's a good deal. We should do that more often. And my comment is, as an aside, I'm always amazed that somebody can put together a bid for a project that is over a million dollars and end up with pennies, seventy-five cents. That, that infers a degree of accuracy that is not feasible.
There, there are ninety-nine unit prices in there, and some of them do have odd numbers.
It's my thing.
Anything else for Mr. Ruble? No? Thank you, sir. But why don't you hang tight, because I know you're up on the, the next item as well. Any subsequent discussion on this item? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protam Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Very good. We'll look forward to that project being completed. We move on to our last action item of the evening, which is new business item fifteen dash one oh eight. This is bidding design service for the twenty-sixteen U.S. Twelve Streetscape Project. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen memo from Superintendent Engineer Ruble and to approve or not to approve the design and bid service for the twenty-sixteen U.S. Twelve Streetscape Project to URS of Grand Rapids in the amount of ninety-eight thousand and five hundred dollars.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protam Rhodes. Mr. Ruble, the floor is yours to speak on your memo dated May the twenty-eighth, twenty-fifteen.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The memo is brief, but it does give a good synopsis of the relationship between the city, URS, and also the MDOT Engineering Office in Brighton, is that the three of us have worked well together. We've worked with Main Street to help coordinate and deal with some of the tough issues on the U.S. Twelve Project. And you're familiar now with URS because they've performed other services leading up to this point where they have offered this proposal of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred to do the design of the Streetscape as it is associated with the U.S. Twelve Project, as well as the bidding services related to that, the bidding information that would go with the MDOT bid documents, together with all the street pay items, street utility pay items and coordination for that. And Mr. Paul Rhino is here. He's the, he's one of the chief architects for the Streetscape Design. And you're certainly familiar, he's made big contributions here and also during our open house that was conducted by...
We would welcome any comments if you have them. If not, no big deal.
Okay. I'm here to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Very good. We appreciate your time. Mr. Ruble, do you have anything further, sir?
No, but I can answer questions if you have any.
Very good. Well, we'll open it up for questions now. Any questions from the dais? No? How about any comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I just want to ensure that during this process of design and final selection, that the design team of Celine Main Street has an opportunity to provide input.
We've included that in our, our proposal.
Good, thank you.
Any additional comments? Any subsequent discussion? Gentlemen, thank you both. Appreciate it. We'll proceed to vote if there's nothing further. It's been properly moved by Cybo Koenig, seconded by Rhodes, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to discussion items. First up is commission, committee and task force reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes?
I have two. First is the Environmental Commission. We, in our last meeting, reviewed a proposal from an organization for textile recycling, things that are upholstery, clothing, whatever, within the city, and unanimously recommended that it come forward to city council. And I believe it, we'll have a presentation on that at our next meeting or shortly thereafter. Also putting together an educational event for the children at Summerfest. It'll be fun and educational, both. And, let's see, that should work well. I have very small handwriting here that I'm trying to decipher. And I attended a River Basin Watershed Council Board Meeting on behalf of the city and the Environmental Commission. And then for Parks Commission, the Green Thumb Award Program has started, started today and goes through the end of July. And nomination forms are available at the rec center, at the library and here at City Hall. And you can nominate either yourself or someone else whose landscaping you think deserves recognition within the community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Other commission, committee or task force reports. Ms. Tahar?
Thank you. The Arts and Culture Committee met today and continued the discussion of the Little Free Libraries Project.
Very good. Excellent. Wonderful initiative. Other commission, committee or task force reports. Mr. Gearbock?
I just want to thank our members of the Historic District Commission for placing the signs out for recognition for historic, maybe historic recognition month. And I think we had a good response for that, and those signs are hopefully all picked up at this time. So, thanks again.
Any other commission, committee or task force reports? Well, I just have one, and maybe Councilwoman Dillon or Councilmember Roth would, would care to elaborate. But I think it was two weeks ago, the Celine Community Substance Abuse Coalition met and worked to finalize our strategic framework. And we had a, a very compelling speaker come in as well. But at the conclusion of the, of the meeting, we had an envelope stuffing party. And we can actually, Chief, why don't you make a copy of this and put it in everyone's mailbox, so they have it for their reference. But one of the, the interesting, and I, I actually think really neat things that, that we've done, is we have sent a letter with the assistance of our friends at Celine Area Schools to the parent of every one of our community's graduating seniors. And this is based on something that's done countywide, and it's been done countywide for a number of years in Monroe County, which is where our consultant is from. And the letter is addressed to the parent, parent or guardian of John Doe. And it's actually in a Celine Police Department envelope, a Pittsfield Township Public Safety envelope, Washtenaw County Sheriff or State Police envelope. So I'm not a parent, but I suspect if, you know, you received a letter to the parent of, of your child and the return address was the State Police or Pittsfield Township Public Safety, you might be inclined to open it. And the letter, it's a very nice letter, congratulates them on, on their upcoming, on the, their, the pending graduation of their, of their son or daughter, but also reminds them of, of the laws relating to underage drinking and drug abuse and what resources are available to them. And it was warmly received in Monroe County. And I suspect this is something that we'll do for, for years to come. And the letter is actually signed by six individuals, signed by our police chief, Lieutenant Joel Allen of the Michigan State Police, Matthew Harshberger, the Director of Pittsfield Township Public Safety, Jerry Clayton, Washtenaw County Sheriff, Dr. Smith Nagpalk, who is of course the co-chair of the Substance Abuse Task Force, as well as Superintendent Scott Braden. And I believe these should have already hit by now. Is that correct, Chief Rennick? So if you happen to know of somebody who, who has a graduating senior and would have received one of these, I would be interested to know how it was received, because I think this is a useful tool to disseminate information. And I'm hopeful that it can be done next year and in subsequent years as well. And unfortunately, because I had a Celtic Festival Committee meeting and the first meeting of the Celine Area Sustainability Circle, which had been on hiatus since twenty-twelve, I was only able to attend the Substance Abuse Coalition meeting for a brief period. Do either Councilmember Roth or Ms. Dillon have anything to add? You don't have to, but no?
Chief, can you tell us when our next meeting is?
July first at six P.M. here in council chambers? Okay.
But you did make it back in time stuffing.
Yeah, I tried my best. I wasn't gonna lick them, though, because I read somewhere it's ten calories apiece. So, all right. But no, I, I thought it was a, I think this was a good program and a, and a good initiative. And so I'm eager to hear how it was received if you happen to speak to people who would have, who would have received the letter. Any other commission, committee or task force reports? No? How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Cybo Koenig?
Last week, myself and several of the other council members had a conversation about the upcoming deadline for filing petitions to run for city council. And one of the things that, that we discussed was ways to encourage citizens in our community to consider running for city council and participating in local government. And what we, what we came up with was sort of an idea of trying to demystify or explain sort of the process and, and what goes into being a council member in really plain terms. And so we're gonna work on an FAQ or an information sheet, just sort of conversational questions about what it means to be on council, what the requirements are, you know, how we balance it with our lives. And we all come from different sort of walks of life. We also are going to plan a couple of sort of casual conversations with the community, maybe at Kerrigan's, where people could come and ask questions directly. So we would like feedback on questions that you might want answered about being a part of local government.
Great. I think it's an excellent idea. Please keep us posted. Very good. Mr. Rhodes, did you have your hand up, sir?
I did. Just sort of wanted to follow up your comments about the letter that went out to the seniors by acknowledging the fact that there were over five hundred students who graduated from Celine High School this... from Celine High School this last weekend after a short delay. And so I wish them well as they go out into the world and continue on with their studies or their careers, whichever. And another indication that the school year is about to end is the fact that we have a lot of students in our audience here this evening who are meeting their final requirements.
Indeed. I think Mr. Rhodes speaks for everyone on council and everyone at the city when he says that we congratulate all of our seniors and wish them the very best in their future endeavors. I have one report or other announcement. I wanted to follow up on an email I sent to you all last week about my fourth annual senior conference, which will be on June the eleventh at the Celine Senior Center, running from approximately nine to one, although we'll be inviting people to gather for a free breakfast at eight. If your schedule permits, I would love for you to attend, but of equal importance, I would appreciate any help in sharing that with any senior in the Celine area who you think might be interested. There'll be some breakout sessions, free health screenings provided by Saint Joe Mercy Health System, a government panel, and then, of course, a free lunch and breakfast, as well as entertainment and door prizes. I think it should be a really nice event. It's expanded from years past. And again, we'll run from, the program will begin promptly at nine and conclude around one o'clock. It is completely free to any senior in the Celine area. Only caveat is you have to R.V.P. and register, and you can do this so by calling the Celine Senior Center. And do that quick, because I think we're going to cut it off at about a hundred, and I was there today, and we've got about seventy-five, eighty signed up thus far. So again, that is June the eleventh, which is a week from this Thursday, at the Celine Senior Center from about nine to one. Any other reports or announcements? No, then let's proceed with our last discussion item of the evening, which is Merchant Park. As you may recall, we had a brief discussion about this issue at our last meeting, actually our last work session, which would have been two weeks ago. We didn't spend a whole lot of time on it because of, because of a, actually, a more pressing, time-sensitive issue, which was the reconstruction of Michigan Ave. in two thousand and sixteen. There is a memo in front of you from City Manager Campbell dated May the thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen regarding proposed redevelopment of Merchant Park. I understand from, from, from talking to Mr. Campbell earlier today that there were some subsequent questions that his office received from council members regarding this project and the terms of the lease and the history of the lease. As I indicated at our last work session, I am looking for some level of consensus this evening in terms of how best to move forward. Before I turn it over to Mr. Campbell, let me say a few brief remarks to put this into some context and maybe give our discussion a little bit of focus. I understand that there are, or I suspect there are some who have some issues and concerns with the lease, which dates back many years, and of course was extended in two thousand and seven, and the current expiration date is two thousand and twenty-seven. But just regarding that for a moment, I feel very strongly that we have a responsibility here and that something needs to be done. I understand what has initially been proposed is a pretty serious, comprehensive, and complete fix, and perhaps there can be something done a little bit more modest that still rectifies a number of problems and deficiencies. But I hope we can come to terms with doing something, because I think anybody who's visited Merchant Park in recent weeks or years has seen that property, that parcel, deteriorate over the course of a great many years. It has great potential. It could be a gathering space, and I just, I firmly believe that something ought to be done. So I guess with that, Mr. Campbell, I'll turn it over to you. We'll open it up for questions, and then we'll, we'll see what the rest of council has to say about this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to make this brief, since we talked a little bit about it a couple of weeks ago. But as the mayor alluded, this has been, even prior to two thousand and seven, many years before two thousand and seven, the city had, excuse me, a lease with the then property owner with the hopes of, in a partnership, developing a nicer public space, if you will, a place to, for people to obviously access those buildings, the businesses back there, but also to make it a overall better public space. Two thousand and six, and the attachments, the memo, you have the Quinn Evans rendering of what, from, what it could look like back in, dated two thousand and six. And then subsequently, in two thousand and thirteen-ish, fourteen, we established a, my office established a work group with city staff, council representation, as well as design team representation from Main Street. And so subsequent attachments shows some of that brainstorming, if you will, some of the potential amenities in that space. And then the last three, I think I actually added one, I apologize, I didn't have that one in the first, the first iteration two weeks ago, but proposing a phased redevelopment of that space where the, again, a couple of things that need to happen, whether it's, as the mayor talked about, whether it'd be the full-blown what's being proposed or something less than. We know we need to, the bricks and the concrete need to be taken out and replaced. Potentially, this, the proposal before you has two of the three trees, two of the three mature trees that are there currently being removed, and because they're, they're essentially causing a lot of the problems with the heaving of the concrete and bricks. And then also some, some work on the, I have a brain cramp here, sorry, drainage, thank you, a big word, but on the drainage that needs some, some, some help. And then we also talked about, you know, there's making those, where the current planer boxes are, essentially removing those and redoing those and making them more of a space with a second phase that would potentially include a canopy and that type of thing for, whether it be for a, you know, concert or a poetry reading or an artist's event, those types of things. But, and also even potentially a water feature. One of the other things, and that would be phase two, phase, another in phase one would be the relocation of the current dumpster corral over to Hall Street, so it would be accessed at Hall Street as opposed to where it is now, potentially creating another space or two. But one of, one of the challenges inside the current dumpster corral are electrical and irrigation controls for the downtown area. So there, while there is in the proposed budget that's attached, there is a number for relocation, but that may or may not be, you know, maybe less, maybe more than that, but, but if the consensus of the work group was that if we were to go with the full proposal, that if it were determined it was cost prohibitive to relocate those controls over near the, I guess that would be to the south, maybe a little west on the site, that we would have to leave them in place and do some, something decorative to protect them. And then the, the one that I, the one drawing, rendering that I attached this time around, I give my apologies, is a, where it says propose phase two, which would be the fencing and some brick pillars type, if you will, with like a wrought iron, you know, Merchant Park across the top. So certainly that, so we're here to answer any questions. Again, Paul Reinhold, he is actually the architect that put these renderings together for us. Jeff Fordice helped contribute, I mean, our whole team did, but as far as the practical putting together some of these projects. And you'll also notice on the, on the proposed budget that we have D.P.W. doing some of the removals and such of that site to cut down on some of the costs.
Let me, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Let's open it up. There are questions first. Any questions? Mr. Gierbaum, please.
Just a couple. Looking at the, I guess, soft costs, which are the fees and the design and so forth, how much of those are associated with just phase one versus both phases? Twenty-four, five?
I believe that's for both phases, for construction engineering.
So the intent would be to do the designs and everything for both phases at initially, right now?
I think that would be, that was the initial thought, but that certainly, that could be changed. We could, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if, Paul, if you were prepared to speak to that, if we were to separate those out. And the other, the other thing that I want to mention is that these numbers do not include inspection, and so there's, so we're waiting on, we're working with Gary Rules, working with U.R.S. to consider possibly a, you know, a part-time, like we do with our street projects, that would greatly reduce that, that cost, but do a partner with U.R.S. where we would have our part-time person inspector on the ground, if you will, boots on the ground, but reporting back, back to them. But, so that's, and I don't have that number, and I apologize for that currently.
The other piece, so we're looking at approximately sixty thousand dollars to gain two parking spaces. I mean, forty, fifty-three thousand, five hundred, based on the cost of moving the electrical and the masonry dumpster that we'd now be required to put down near Hall Street, if I'm looking at this right?
I mean, I'm looking at two, there's two items in here that says the, you know, relocate existing electricals, twenty-five thousand, and then masonry dumpster enclosure, twenty-eight, five. So that's fifty-three, five hundred, and whatever additional costs would be associated with that. So that would be that cost to put those parking spaces. I consider that separate of the plaza. But the plaza, then, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just to do the basics that are shown here for replacing whatever's there, which I don't have a problem. That, I know that has to be done, and we need to do that. The other question I'd have is that because this lease expires in two thousand and twenty-seven, I think putting this kind of money into it for only another twelve years seems a bit excessive. If we could extend this lease for a few, another decade or another fifteen years in addition to what we have here, would make more sense, because I think the initial time when we did this, since I think we repaired it back in the early eighties, or in the mid eighties initially, that's almost like a thirty-year lease that we had on those improvements. So the return on that would seem that we would need to have a longer extension in the lease to make sure that we don't end up paying for something that we won't have the use of for a significant period of time. Those are just my comments.
Questions? I'm staying on questions right now. Ms. Tahar?
I think this is a question, probably for Mr. Fordice. I recall from an earlier discussion, it might have been in the task force, it might have been with City Council, that there were reasons that, in favor of moving the dumpster, that had nothing to do with the Merchant Park itself, but that it was, it would be a better location for other reasons for the dumpster than just the park reasons. Could you talk about that again?
Yeah, that's correct. The, the current dumpster corral is reasonably difficult to service. We, the cans in there have to be manually wheeled out into the parking lot before they can be dumped into the truck, because there's no way for a truck to get into that corral and service those canisters. So because of that, they have to be relatively small canisters so that they're light enough for a person to roll. And then we have a number of service problems with that in the wintertime, especially because just a little bit of ice, a little loss of traction, it's, we miss service days, and that, that corral is frequently overloaded with large items, and it becomes very difficult to service that. So the new corral would be angled in a way that the trucks can directly access the cans, the front-end load trucks, and dump those cans directly without having to deal with rolling them around first. So it will, it will solve a problem that happens multiple times a year.
And would it also, in addition to all of those good things, would it also eliminate the, those times when the parking lot is completely blocked by the presence of the truck? Or will the new location just give us a different place for blockage?
I would say it'll reduce it, because when, when the cans are being serviced, Hall Street will be blocked, and the Hall Street exit from Parking Lot One will be blocked. But it'll be a much shorter period of time, because there'll just be two large cans, pull in, dump it, put it back down, reposition, dump, put it back down, and they're done, rather than rolling out three or four different cans, dealing with the additional trash that's in there. So it'll be a faster process.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let me, let me jump back then to something, unless you have anything further. Let me jump back then, because I want to see how quickly we can develop consensus here. I want to jump back to something that Mr. Gierbaum said. Mr. Gierbaum, I know you're looking at some of the numbers that are enumerated in Mr. Todd's memorandum. You mentioned that you have no problem and you see a need to do the basic fix, which would be to address the bricks, the concrete, and the drainage. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's stick on that for just a moment and see if we have consensus to do a pretty basic fix. Can I, can I put you on the spot, Mr. Rhodes?
You can. I support phase one in its entirety.
Okay. All right. Ms. Seibokanik?
I support phase one.
Okay. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, I would support phase one.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
I will not support phase one or two. I would only support fixing the stuff that make it necessary for the safety, whereas removing the bricks, putting a flat surface, it's not causing trip hazard. I'd do away with all of the other clarifications that we have. I think it's this lease that we have is not good for the city. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. That is a small, very parcel that's there that's owned by an individual, and we're leasing it for a dollar a year. His maximum payout is going to be only twenty thousand dollars, which already he's got nine, seven thousand, nine hundred dollars worth of credit toward that, so thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars credit, that's all he's got to pay for the project. If this project phase two and three is completed, it's going to cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more for the city just for something to look nice. I think we'd better put that toward sidewalks, fixing our roads. It's better off for the entire community than just putting lots of stuff crammed in a little spot and making another project to make our city look nice. We create a place, but this whole city, all sidewalks and streets and everything we live with is our city, not just this small little piece downtown called Main Street.
Thank you, Mr.
So I'm definitely against it. I'm for doing what's necessary for safety, but cut out the frills.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Ms. Dillon?
I'm in favor of the safety fixes and not all the fringe items like the stage.
Okay. Well, what I'm trying to develop consensus on right now is phase one.
Well, phase one is showing a stage, stage performance zone.
Sure. Mayor? Real quick, can I get Mr. Campbell a comment? I just want to clarify.
Right. Go ahead. We'll get Mr. Gierbaum next.
The, if you look at phase two on the second page of that, under site improvements, it says performance slash shade structure, twenty-five thousand dollars. That, that's proposed in phase two. And the other thing I want to mention, too, is that, and I apologize, one of the thoughts from this work group was that potentially for the, for the second phase, the, of the amenities would be to do like a GoFundMe type or crowdfunding type of campaign to try and raise some of the funds for that, or maybe all the funds for that.
That clarification help a little bit? Ms. Dillon?
So I just wanted to make sure, then, so that, no, I do like further clarification, because I'm basing my decision off of this drawing.
But, if, like I said, if you look at phase two, it's included in phase two, not phase one.
Okay. But then why is it under a phase one?
That's just the drawing, I guess, I mean, it's.
But it's showing.
Okay, right. Sure. Well, this, when I, when I, I'm the one that labeled propose phase one, so if we can, I guess, so my apologies for that. I was just trying to show that the, from the, from looking down from above, because if you look at the phase two, that actually shows the shaded structure.
Right.
So, but for clarification, that is not included in Phase One, it would be included in Phase Two.
Okay. Then if that's the case, then yes, I would agree.
Okay. Mr. Gierbaugh, I know you had your hand up. You're comfortable with Phase One, including the relocation of the dumpsters?
Yeah, what I was saying was I was splitting those two out, because the dumpster relocation and the electrical really has not what to do with the plaza. If we're trying to fix the issue with actually adding a couple of spaces, and then also creating a better solution for the dumpsters and so forth, I see that as a separate issue outside of it. So that's kind of a, and it's a expensive approach, but at least, hopefully, we'll get some parking spaces out of it, better flow, whatever else, and then the other component. I was trying to rationalize for myself how we got to this number of 160,000. That explains a little bit more. Unfortunately, that's a huge ticket to try and move that electrical, which I would hope that we would be able to significantly reduce that if possible.
And I wouldn't disagree, Councilmember Gierbaugh, with any of the statements you just made about the relocation of the dumpsters. However, I think if we look long-term and we have a vision for that space, obviously, if we want to invite people to gather and to loiter, relocating the dumpsters from their vicinity probably helps accomplish that.
Oh, I don't disagree with that either, but I mean, that whole aspect, it's not just to do this for this plaza.
It's not just an aesthetic change.
There's a lot of things justifying that change. Unfortunately, there's a big ticket to it, and that's a lot of money to put for that when we have some other repairs needed in other parking lots.
Absolutely. All right, it looks like there's consensus then to proceed with Phase One. Mr. Roth, did you have your hand up, sir?
Yes, I have a question. How much tax revenue will the city receive from the owner for this particular parcel that we're talking about?
I don't have the answer for this specific parcel.
Is he taxed, is that owner taxed for this parcel, and we're making improvements on it or not? Or is that not considered for what he's assessed for?
Well, actually, if you look, I believe the, I believe the lease addresses that.
My hunch is he's not assessed for it at all, and we just got it for a dollar, and we're spending all this money to improve it, and what gain are we going to get out of it?
Do you want to look that up?
I've just checked, one-on-one for the logic behind it, why we have to pay such a price tag for such a small little parcel that we're leasing for a dollar.
While Mr. Campbell looks at that point, I do want to get back to another item that you threw out, Mr. Gierbaugh, which I think is an interesting proposition. And if I'm paraphrasing you incorrectly, you jump in here. But you suggested because of the amount that we're investing, there may be some merit in approaching the property owner to see about extending the lease. Is that correct? Do you have a number or a duration in mind?
Based on this, I would think we're, since the last time we did it was for 30 years, this should be out for another 30 years.
So adding another 30 years to 2027?
Basically another 20 years.
Another 20 years.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Saibou, what are your thoughts on that?
I think it is not a bad idea. 12 years is not a long time to see sort of this investment through. I would go along...
Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I appreciate Mr. Gierbaugh's comment there, as I hadn't really thought about that aspect of it, and I agree, it would be worthwhile to extend the lease to spread our costs out.
Ms. Tihar?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
Extending the lease extra time, it's just going to be all to the favor of the owner, because add more time to it, it's going to cost us more in the city over the long period. Who's going to guarantee what we have's going to last that 20 or 30 years? So it just makes a commitment for the people in the future. Now, I would change the lease that he has, remove that limit of $20,000 maximum. Then we're talking turkey. Right now, the lease says $20,000 maximum, credit for any previous improvements that he's paid out of his pocket toward that $20,000. Remove that clause, extend it, then I think it's fair. I think the owner's getting too much, and the city's paying for it. We as taxpayers, when we pay our taxes, the house, the individual residents are paying for such. If you check out for us, the amount of money goes in the general fund, in the TIFF funds and other kinds of funds that's generated from the property, just contained within Main Street, it would take probably three or four years using just that money for that project. It's not wise or prudent. We need to think of further. We can desire to have all those nice things, but let's think for who's paying for it. We're paying for the people from Main Street to promote their businesses and so on. And then we hear the businesses crying that they can't park right outside their doors. We need to think what we're doing. I'm not against for having something nice, but we don't have to have at expense. The property owner could even, should be able to develop that sometime and put another business in there. Then it's an income revenue for us. We're closing them out if we extend that lease.
Ms. Dillon?
I'm in favor of extending the lease.
Extending the lease, okay. So again, if I'm...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just to follow up on one of Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Roth's points, if the lease were extended, might we negotiate with the property owner for additional contributions toward improvements and maintenance as part of the extension of the lease?
Sure, we could.
I think that would be very wise.
Okay. And so consensus then is to have staff engage with the deed holder for a 20-year extension?
Correct.
Correct? Correct? Okay, that's the consensus. Are you clear on that?
I'm not.
Yep, your objection is duly noted. Does the majority feel that this is the appropriate direction to go in? You clear on that?
So that would be 2047, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Yeah, I mean, another 30 years, basically.
Did you...
I would approve it, it's not consideration that it will be negotiated. Because $20,000, which now he's already contributed over $7,000 toward it, $13,500, $13,500, yes, for how many years that he's getting all this benefit to his property, enhancing it for future sales, or whatever it might be? To me, it's ridiculous. Poor business. We're expected to do the proper business for our constituents who voted us in. I think we're doing wrong.
And Councilmember Roth, we understand, we respect your perspective, but the majority feels differently. So, Mr. Campbell?
Two things. First, to answer Mr. Roth's question states, "The city shall pay any and all real estate taxes and assessments levied on or billed to the above described real estate during the term of this lease." So that's the answer to his question. Secondly, and I think I mentioned this at the work session two weeks ago, but if not, I had, when I talked with the property owner, and mentioned that, you know, with, again, for the terms that, as Mr. Roth commented earlier about essentially with the prior improvements that he's made, that technically, legally speaking, by the current agreement, that it's about $12,500 is what he has remaining to contribute. And I said, would he consider, you know, making that $20,000? And he said that he certainly understood the importance of it, and the value to the community, and that he would certainly consider doing that. He didn't say yes, he didn't say no, but he said he would certainly take it under serious consideration.
So here's, we have consensus to proceed with Phase One, and to have you contact the deed holder to see about the possibility of extending this lease by 20 years and reporting back. You clear on that, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything further from the dais at this time? Mr. Roth, or Mr. Rhodes, excuse me.
Thank you. I did want to suggest that we move forward with designing of both phases to start with, because I would hate to put something in under Phase One, then have to change it for Phase Two. I don't know that that was clear from what we were talking about here.
I'm comfortable with that. Does anybody have any objections to that? Good.
So, say that again, I want to make sure I understand.
I repeat your statement there, Mr. Rhodes.
Just wanted to do in the initial design work to include Phase Two design in there also.
Okay. The other thing...
That's what's proposed here, I believe.
We do have a proposal from URS to do the, I mean, we have the 18-5, but my thought was to, obviously, we wanted to wait and see what the consensus, the direction was here tonight, and then would be bringing that back for consideration of council at the next meeting toward, similar to what you all just did for the Michigan Ave project, but it's the 18-5 number.
Everyone clear on that?
Looks for me.
Mr. Gierbaugh, you okay with that?
Yeah, we can always add it into the fundraising money.
All right, very good. Appreciate it. Thank you. If there's nothing further on Merchant's Park, are there any other discussion items this evening? No, then we'll proceed to public comments. This is the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Of course, I am disappointed that you didn't receive my letter of October 1, 2012, and I would like to ask how I go about having this received on the consent agenda. And if someone could get with me, I would appreciate that. The other thing is, as far as, I served on City Council 22 years, and we received information as taxpayers and concerned citizens. As far as the lot behind Merchant's Park, which is one of the good boys, I think that's on the stone, that's personal. I think it's a sweetheart deal, which may not be a good word, but this is taxpayers' money. You should only tax the roof over someone's house for something that they have to have that they cannot supply for themselves. Water, sewer, police, fire, DPW. Other than that, it's subjective to what you think we ought to pay for. We had Henni Field. Henni Field was going to be a gathering area. Why don't we put the gathering stage down on Henni Field? This is private property. And I agree with Mr. Roth. We want to talk about safety, why don't we talk about the fire escape that doesn't come off the old Opera House? Nobody's ever thought about that one either, but oh, well. I mean, we don't want to hurt the good old boys, just that taxpayers get to pay.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional public comments? Just want to note that your letter was received, it was distributed and placed in every individual council member's mailbox. If there's a member of council who would like to include it as part of the public record and add it to the consent agenda, they are certainly willing and free to do that at any subsequent meeting. But just to confirm, your letter was received, it was placed in every individual council member's mailbox, and we appreciate the time and attention that you've invested in that issue.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
There is a big discrepancy, what the tax we pay for our small little houses within the city of Celine. My small house that I have, thousand square feet, costs more than $3,000 a year, going on $4,000. I can have a big place in the township and pay the same amount of taxes. The people in the townships can come in and enjoy these amenities that we're taxed for. Is that fair? When we want to annex and make our city whole, and not have holes within it, the people really protest, because they appreciate and enjoy their low taxes that's out in the townships. I'm sure there's a difference in far as fire protect, I mean, police protection, they have to maybe go to the sheriff or something else, but fire, they get the same as what we've got. And water, we pay through the nose for our water and our taxes, we pay taxes on it, but we pay our water and sewer bills, that's on top of it. So it costs a lot to live within the city. And I think it's my job, as being on council, representing the taxpayers, I need to be due diligent with their funds.
Anything else to be brought before City Council this evening? Noel, then I would note that we have upcoming meetings on the 15th of June and the 6th of July, no work meetings, they're both regular meetings, and they will begin at 7:30 PM. We have no absences to excuse, so at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:54 PM.
So moved.
8:50, excuse me, even better, 8:54 PM. Was that moved by Ms. Tihar?
Yes, it was.
And seconded by?
Saibokini.
Seconded by Saibokini. All those in favor of adjourning at 8:54 PM signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.